I'd like to call the City of Frazier zoning board appeals meeting of March 3, 2022, to order. Please ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Please note that all current appointed members are in attendance this evening. We do have one vacancy due to the resignation of member Hunt. So the remaining six members are here this evening, and we do have a quorum to conduct business. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
Yeah, motion by Farina, seconded by Menendez to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? Petitioners and members of the audience, the zoning board of appeals as herein created is a body of limited powers. Where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier code, the board shall have powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction, structural changes in equipment, or alteration of buildings or structures so that the spirit of the code shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all the following facts and conditions exist. First, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. Second, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right, similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district and in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Third, that the authorizing of such a variance will not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent and purpose of the Frazier code or the public interest. And finally, that the conditions or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of general regulation for such condition or situation. The item before us this evening is a public hearing. When the item is presented and the public hearing is opened, if anyone wishes to speak on the item, please identify yourself with name and address so that we might have that for the record. Next item on the agenda as presented is old business. I am not aware of any old business coming before us this evening. Mr. Farina, did you have something?
Yes. Have we got any applicants? Mr. Erble's seen it?
No.
Okay. Nothing?
Nothing. And we can discuss that further under item 7B on the recommendations for the members. Any other old business? Hearing none. Next item is a public hearing, appeal number 22-01, variance request for the "Like New Carpet Cleaning." Request a variance of section 32-85-3-B, setbacks from the road center line for freestanding signs, and section 32-85-2-E provisions relating to permitted number and allowable area of signs for the industrial district. Is petitioner present?
Sir.
Ms. Warren, would you like to give us a background information regarding this request?
Yes. So the property in question is 34155 Kelly Road. The applicant is requesting to obtain a variance from the zoning ordinance to place a ground sign closer to the road center line with Kelly. Seventy feet is allowed, 41 feet is requested. Another variance request to exceed the number of allowable signs in industrial zoned property. One sign is allowed, three are requested. And then to obtain a variance from the zoning ordinance that exceeds allowable wall sign area, 100 feet is permitted, 100 square feet, 110 square feet is requested in total. The minimum distance between the -- this is regarding the ground signs. The minimum distance is classified, Kelly is classified as a major road, so that is how we get that setback. And then if there's any questions regarding that review, I'm happy to answer from the board.
Are there any questions for the administration regarding this presentation or the items presented? Ms. Warren, the 70-foot center line setback for a sign is applied to roads which are 120-foot right-of-way. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the current right-of-way for Kelly Road in this area is?
So the width of this road is very narrow. It's actually 66 feet.
Okay, 33 feet from center line.
Correct.
Okay. And the buildings that are located on this site, are they set back based upon a 120-foot right-of-way, or are they set back based upon a 33-foot right-of-way?
I believe it's the 33-foot.
Okay. Other questions for the administration? Mr. Farina?
Yes. So if he -- we put it back 120 feet, like the ordinance wants, it would be behind the front of the building?
Correct. The front of the building, I believe, is at the 70-feet limit from the center line.
Okay. And you're -- are you going to go through your recommendations?
Of course. We recommend that you consider the applicant's justifications for hardships to determine if the variance is warranted. We do believe that he does have justification for the setback. The two wall signs, I know there was some clarification needed for the what was put on the agenda. Paul did mention that they stated that these could be considered as two separate signs, the verbiage and the little graphic of the bubbles, and then the white lettering on the side. So that is why they were kind of separated. So if there was any other questions when it went further beyond this, that he put that as a possibility of doing the two different variances for those wall signs. That's how he got the three in total.
All right. Are there any other questions for the administration?
Yes. Did you go down and view that driving down the road?
I'm sorry?
Did you go and view that driving?
I did not. Paul did.
What did he say about sightline to the sign? Because I went by both ways, and you cannot see a sign on the front of the building, driving in either direction.
He -- all that he mentioned was that the road was very narrow. There weren't -- between Grossbach and the railroads there, there aren't other signs that are that close in that area. But he does think that there is--
He said there are not?
I couldn't view it. I couldn't see any other signs when I just did like a Google street map.
There are other signs.
Okay. I was just looking between the two. Okay.
Okay.
My apologies.
No, no apologies needed. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the administration?
No.
I have one. Yeah, I do, actually.
Mr. Logan was first, so, Mr. Logan.
So the three signs in the front is the three signs?
The one ground sign and then the wall sign. He's splitting it up as the words to the right, and then the "like new" sign with the graphic.
"Like new" is one sign?
With the graphic, yes.
And that's one another sign?
And then the words to the right, where it says cleaning services, carpet tile windows. He is seeing as -- he said it could be argued that they are two signs, so just have that justification, two variances.
Okay. And then a ground sign is the third sign?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Farina?
Yeah, I don't -- I don't see them as two different signs personally. I mean, are you buying two different signs to put up? I guess -- I can't ask you that now.
The measurement is measured in total. So 100 square feet is permitted. In total, it's 110 square feet. I think, like I said, I think Paul just said that it could be argued that it was two signs, and that's how he split it up.
Could I ask for clarification? So you said that the total area of the sign was 110 square feet?
110 square feet, both signs in total.
And that counts some portion of the blank space in between?
It's actually divided into a tightly rectangle between the letters. That's how they calculate it in total. So it is still calculated as the two separate signs. And then per the zoning ordinance, it's a total square footage of the wall signs.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the administration? Hearing none. Is there anything that the petitioner wishes to add to the administration's presentation or to his application? And if you would, please give us your name so that we can have that for the record.
Bruce Kopitz. And I guess I'd like to pass this out. As part of the findings that Paul came up with, he indicated that there were no other properties that had multiple signs. And I toured the community before I bought, and I toured it again. And there, to my knowledge, there are other properties like that, and I have them here. If I could just pass this out.
If you would, give them to the clerk. She'll pass them out for us or hand them down to us. You don't have to--
Keep one for yourself.
I don't know the background of these properties, and I don't know if they've got their own variances that they've applied for in the past. I certainly don't want to create any issues for them. That was not the point. The point is that these signs are here.
Mr. Kopitz, you do understand that the zoning ordinance would allow a ground sign, just not necessarily a ground sign and a wall sign?
Right. That's what I -- that's the point I was making. Interpower, for example, has both.
Yeah. Well, I see the -- I see the one, and I appreciate your research and background. I see the one for Interpower that clearly has a ground sign as well as a wall sign. On the other examples that you've provided, at least I don't see where there's a wall sign in addition to the ground sign. There may or may not be. I just don't have evidence of it.
Spartan Carbide has two. And I noted that setbacks -- I'm not a student of the law relating to the city, so I don't know if the setbacks are different in these types of subs than on mine. But their setback was less than 70 feet on both PCS Company and RW Mead, and also Spartan Carbide.
Yeah, I would say that interior industrial subdivisions do have a different setback from the center of the road than does a major thoroughfare such as Kelly.
And I didn't know that. But I know that Revere Plastic has basically four monument signs out front. And Amber Manufacturing has two very large signs, and Two Men in a Truck has two signs out front, as does Carbide Technologies. The pictures in the Carbide Technology page, the last page, are two different monument signs.
Are there any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Farina?
Are you buying two signs up for the front of your wall?
Well, it's only considered one sign on the wall by the sign maker, but--
You're paying one bill, he's putting up one sign.
One sign up front and one sign on the monument.
Would you squeeze that together to get under 100 square feet?
Oh, I'm certain that the sign could be altered in its design.
You willing to do that?
Oh, if that's required, certainly.
Well, it doesn't take you down from three variances to two variances. So--
Well, if that's your requirement, I'll be willing to comply.
Well, the less variances, the better.
Not putting words into Mr. Farina's mouth, but if I may ask it a different way, would it be a hardship for you to bring those signs together such that they would not exceed 100 square feet in area?
Well, they wouldn't have the same impact. That's the only answer I really have. They were designed to provide impact from the road. If we have to reduce the size, you know, I can do that. I would prefer not to, but I can do that.
And if I may, Ms. Kopitz, so your business is that of a cleaning facility or cleaning--
Service.
--service. Do you provide services for your clients at your facility?
Area rugs.
Area rugs? What percentage of your business, if you had to take a guess, would you say that that function is?
Well, just simply servicing area rugs is pretty small. But carpet cleaning is the majority of our business, and we hope to pick up a tremendous amount from the surrounding neighborhoods.
Right. But you're talking about going to those facilities to perform that function. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I guess in terms of need to identify the building along Kelly Road, I question whether there is -- whether it would once again be a hardship if people had potentially had a difficult time finding your building by just sticking with the allowable signage. I would presume that most of your customers, many of your customers, probably have never visited your site, and that all of your contact and provision of service with your customers actually takes place at their location rather than at your location. Would that be accurate?
Well, that's fair assessment as far as it goes. My perspective is, I spent basically $1 million cash on this building in improvements. It's my life savings. It's my family business, and I wanted to provide a substantial return. And I realize that that cannot be the only reason to make a favorable finding. But it's important for me to make inroads into the community that they see that I'm there to lend the service. If you go straight down Kelly to Speed Clean Services, which is, I believe, corner of Kelly and--
14 Mile.
14. But they're on the opposite side of the road, so they're not subject to Frazier requirements. Their building is loaded with signs because people passing by can see Speed Clean, and all they offer, like auto detailing and area rug cleaning and such. And then they provide Speed Clean with business. And I want to have that same advantage.
Other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Burley?
Yeah, I got a question on that ground sign. You have LED. What is that supposed to represent?
Well, with LED, you can vary the sign with the computer. You can put up--
Oh, so it's like a computer screen?
Right.
Okay, okay. Just understanding that. Because if you have something like a front sign, you'd be able to put whatever you want, cleaning, and you know, and you could cut down and still get the visibility of the, you know, "Like New" logo on the building. But maybe put something to get rid of that other sign where it has duplicating, it says cleaning services, carpet and stuff, because that should be on there right also?
Well, the problem that I have in that area is people -- there's a rapid transit speed. People pass by quickly. And they're only going to have a second to glance over. It would be, you know, unsafe. So if I have maximum impact from a wall sign where they could pick up the information they want there, if they don't want to get another computer screen, it's better for my business.
But when I drove by coming northbound, you barely saw the building because there's a big tree there. And then when you come south side, you don't even see the front of the building because it's on an angle. So even putting that big on the front of the building, if you're coming south side, you won't even know it. you won't even know it.
I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm sure that's a fair assessment. I believe that you don't notice it as much.
Well, you won't notice it until you're right at it. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, you only have seconds to look at it.
Yes, so if you're driving.
Illuminated, it will, it will be able to, people will be able to perceive the sign much better. Right now, the building is, it's a favorable color for the neighborhood. It's sort of a wood-type brown, but it doesn't gather much attention.
Right.
The signs would give us attention and hopefully give us business from all the communities in Fraser.
Ms. Farina?
LED sign, you don't plan on flashing things, do you, on that?
No, it doesn't work like that. They're designed for monuments on streets and they give messages, but they don't blind people or, you know.
Because there are rules that we have put in place because we had a problem with-
Right.
Okay, you're, I'm not sure, but I believe you're allowed to change the message on there once every 60 seconds, 90 seconds?
I believe that's 60.
Yeah.
And that's fine. We would be certain to comply with all the, all the rules in place.
All right. And I am, I agree that if you go down, by the way, the speed limit on that street is 30 and 35 miles an hour. Not a high-speed street. Although, do people go faster than that down there? Yeah, they do. Yeah, but, yeah. There are a lot of chuck holes up near 15 Mile Road there.
Oh, you are right.
Those are reverse speed bumps. Any other questions for the petitioner? As noted, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding this request? Ms. Warren, have you received any written correspondence from the public hearing notices?
I have not.
Okay. Once again, this is appeal number 22-01 regarding the property of 34155 Kelly Road. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Please note for the record that there is no one in the public that wishes to be heard. I will close the public hearing, bring it back up to the board for discussion.
One other question I have to ask. Sorry. The, the entire area that's in the gray on your building, is that a light box over that whole thing or is just the sign portion a light box?
What, is this the illustration?
Picture.
Ah, okay. The gray is a background. That, that's, the front of the building is brick, rest of the building is block and that section of the front is block. So the sign are those individual components.
Okay, but what portion will be lit? It says it is contoured light box.
The bubbles, the word Like New, and then the separate small sign to the side.
So these are, these are channel letters individually illuminated?
Yes.
And then the, the Cleaning Services and so forth, the signage to the right is a single internally illuminated translucent-faced sign?
Much better description than I could provide.
But you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Farina, did you have something else or? Looking for a motion?
Are we going to handle these all together or one at a time?
Depends on how somebody makes their motion.
I'd like to move to approve a variance to place a ground sign closer to the road than the center line, allowed 70 feet to 41 feet. Monument sign.
Second.
We have motion by Farina, seconded by Logan to approve the ground sign setback portion of the request. Is there any discussion on that motion? Ms. Menendez?
Should we articulate the reason for that with the setback being through that road with 66 and it being 33 feet as opposed to 120 and 70?
You're, you're correct. I should, the hardship is that the buildings in that area are closer than they're, than they would be under current standards to the road.
Other discussion on the motion? If there's no more discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Farina, did you wish to make another motion? Or does anyone else want to make a motion?
I really, I really think you're wasting your money on that upside.
Ms. Warren, question if I may. To place any amount of signage on the building would require a variance since it would be a second sign. Is that correct?
Correct. You're allowed either one ground sign or one wall sign in that area.
And if a business was to place a wall sign in that area on this size of a building, I don't know if it is building-driven, what would the allowable area be of that sign for a wall sign?
It's 100 square feet.
Again, if a motion was made to allow you a second sign of 100 square feet, would, could you live with that? Would you be willing to accept that?
Certainly.
And I'd like to make a motion to, to allow a second sign of 100 square feet for this area. And the issue is the placement of the building and the traffic, the way, the way the building is slanted on the property does not allow for good, good viewing. And that there is, someone on Dorica in Fraser also has two signs.
Is there a second?
A second.
A motion by Farina, seconded by Chmenty for approval of a wall sign. And I guess I got two comments that I would like to make on that. Number one, you said a second wall sign of 100 square feet, and do you mind if we change that to up to 100 square feet?
Correct. No problem, I do not.
And second of all, I have an objection to making reference to another building on-
Dorica.
Dorica without knowing the background on it or was there a variance obtained for that? Was it an illegally placed sign? I would, and each case has to stand alone on its own merits. So I do have some objection to using that as a basis for an appeal in this case.
I withdraw that. Joe, do you mind if I withdraw that?
Ms. Thomas, you have a comment?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify for the record your intention, Mr. Farina, because as it was presented with two signs on the building, so I just want to clarify for the record if your intention was just to have the one sign on the building rather than the two kind of combined as one?
The two combined as one.
So that, so I think as the, as the, the report was, was given to us as two on the outs, the exterior of the building, the motion should then be for those two signs?
I don't agree that it's two signs.
Okay.
That is, that is, he has broken it into two signs. They can link it as one sign.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify for your motion then that they would be linked physically as one unit then?
Or installed in such a way that if they were measured as a single sign, they would not exceed the 100 square feet?
However you choose to-
Is, is my understanding of Mr. Farina's motion.
However you choose to word it, but I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Keep us out of trouble.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Are we supposed to do roll calls though? Or is that-
We don't have to do roll calls.
Or is that just for the Zoom meeting? There's no more drawers?
There's no more drawers. So, apologize. Mr. Kopitz, we normally would provide you with a signed copy of your appeal this evening. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't have my stamp with me, so I can't do so. But we will see that one is available for you at the Building Department. If you contact them, you would be able to pick one up or your sign company, obviously, can do so when they obtain their sign permit.
Very good. Thank everybody.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Pleasant process.
Welcome to the community. We wish you a lot of luck.
Oh, thank you for that.
So were drawers the anti-COVID thing? Anyway. Next item on the agenda is new business of the board, the Board of Appeals 2022 meeting calendar. I actually thought we already did that, but I couldn't find it anywhere in the minutes.
We did do it before.
Okay. All right, we have before us a proposed meeting schedule. I presume that all of the dates shown are, the regular meetings correspond to the first Thursday of the month and that the alternate dates are the third Thursday of the month. I don't offhand see any dates that would potentially cause a conflict. July is usually the one that causes trouble. The 7th should reasonably keep us out of trouble. I'm sorry? Well, apparently Monday is the 4th this year in July, so if people are taking a long weekend, hopefully they'll be back to work by Tuesday. All right, is there a motion regarding the proposed calendar for 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Member Burley, seconded by Member Farina to approve the 2022 calendar as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is zoning board appeals recommendation for appointments to the terms of Chmenty and Menendez who are expired technically already. I guess I'll, I'll get the tough questions over with first. Ms. Menendez, are you interested in, or have you submitted a new application? Did they make you do that?
I submitted a request or, yes.
Okay. So I, so I presume you are interested in continuing to serve. Ms. Chment, Mr. Chmenty, have you done the same?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to council that the reappointment of both commissioners, they have served admirably, they're always here and always prepared.
Chair will second. Motion by Farina, seconded by the chair to recommend reappointment of Members Chmenty and Menendez to terms, I guess it would be expiring in 2024. Is there any discussion on that?
I have a question for the city clerk. Now, will this be along with the planning commission recommendations in next weeks?
We actually sent, we're checking out today for the council members and in there was a memo and part of it stated that the recommendations from the planning commission were made and I noted that I would be in attendance tonight at the ZDA meeting and I would send them the recommendations before meeting as well.
So the, the reappointments appear on council's next agenda, is that correct?
Yes, and council has now, they will be requesting that Ms. Menendez and Mr. Chmenty come to the council meeting as well. I'm just going to save a bit of questions for that.
Okay.
And that is the tip.
That is the tip, yep. And I will, I will send you both an email.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, it say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We also have a vacancy that, of Member Hunt. Have we published announcement of that vacancy?
We have been diligently placing notice that we have vacancies on various commissions and boards since December. They run on the channel five and on the website and the Parks and Recreation, they have a pretty active Facebook page and they're on there frequently. We feel very blessed and lucky for the people that are serving because we're having a hard time to meet.
Okay, at this time, you have no citizens who have submitted an application to, to serve on the zoning board appeals in Mr. Hunt's position, is that correct?
Can I make a suggestion? We, we had two applicants for the planning commission and one of those applicants, you know, we can only take one member, but they were both good members, yeah.
I will perhaps speak with the city manager about that, but right when you were saying that, I was thinking the very same thing.
And I, and I guess officially, and Ms. Thomas, you may weigh in on this, the city council doesn't have to have our recommendation. A applicant or a appointee doesn't officially have to submit an application. They can pick somebody out of the audience on the 10th and say you're the next ZDA member.
I do know the ultimate decision and appointment is by city council, yes. I'm not sure, I guess procedurally, they would probably likely need to submit an application.
There, there has been a historic process that-
Yeah.
We have gone through, but there's no statutory requirement that they follow that.
But the ultimate appointment is by city council, yes. Yes.
Interview at one time.
Inscription. Just, you know, if you raise too many questions at the council meeting, you shall be appointed. Don't want to do that, don't want to do that.
I'll let Don not add that one to the book.
See, see how he feels about that. He may, he may have a, have a list of possible appointments. All right. Next item is election of officers and-
I moved to elect Mark Stamek as chairman. I moved to elect Frank-
Oh, jeez, I was going to get out of that within a second. All right, two, two things. Number one-
I thought we did this.
No. No, and, and quite honest, quite honestly, I don't think we should do it now until we get the new, the members reappointed. Typically, we don't do this while we have-
Pending.
Terms that are pending and so forth because we may, I may make a motion to appoint somebody that may or may not get reappointed.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I think I would-
I mean, what, or nominate you now?
I mean, well, or nominate you now?
I could always, I could always say no.
Yeah, true, very true.
It, it, once again, in, in terms of procedure or, or policy regarding that, historically, we have not done it before the, uh, reappointments have been made by city council, because I think it would be premature to do that. However, I think officially I have a motion in a second. So, does either, either or both of you want to withdraw those?
There's only one thing. If we don't meet for another four months, you know, is it time limit? I mean, is it between calendar and calendar year, you know, one time to another?
No, I don't believe so.
December 31st to another? Well, I, I believe we ought to deal with the people we have now and new people coming on. Just go from there.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to, um.
You accept.
I see you're going to push me to recorder. I got an out. I, I will, but, well, let me, let me.
Oh, one more year.
Yeah, and that's, that's the issue. This is going to be the last year. So, do you have me sit as chair again, or do you have somebody else sit in his chair while I'm on the floor?
One more year, you said. When is your term on?
December.
So you're not going to come back to the ZB.
After next December. This December.
I'll go to 19.
You could do that publicly if you like.
Well, I.
If you want, if you, if you want us to, to hold off, I mean, I can hold off, but, you know, it just.
I think you're a great chair. I mean, I'm in fear of doing it now, even if it's till you decide you don't want to do it anymore. I think, I think you're a great chair.
Whatever you feel fine with.
Well, and, and with all due respect, my position, my term is not up. But if you appoint somebody for a position whose term is technically up, that may be moot if they don't get reappointed.
Then we'll handle it.
Okay. Uh, are there any other nominations for chair? Hearing none, um, all those are in favor of.
If there's no other nominations, that's what.
That's correct. There's only one nomination, and you accept, you don't need to have a vote on it.
I want to see how close I can, anyway. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to nominate vice chair.
Certainly.
Frank Farina, just so we don't have to worry, snap up for reappointment, so it shouldn't be an issue if he chooses to accept the nomination.
Chair will second, uh, the nomination of Mr. Farina for vice chair. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations, and since there were only one nomination, Mr. Farina is elected as vice chair. Uh, we also have, um, a secretary.
I nominate Roseanne.
Yes, second.
We have motion by Farina, seconded by Logan, uh, to nominate, uh, Ms. Menendez as, um, secretary. Ms. Menendez, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I'm reappointed.
Just accept and.
Worry about that later.
What you wanted to say is. Just say yes and no, and then we'll deal with it later.
Okay, yeah, yes.
All right, for the record, Ms. Menendez did accept the nomination. Are there any other nominations for the office of secretary? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations for secretary, uh, and since there is only one nomination, uh, Ms. Menendez shall serve as the secretary. Congratulations to all.
I have a question. And I was just looking at the planning package, I was looking at the package. Where do we approve the minutes of the meeting, previous meeting?
It's coming up. Item 11?
11.
Okay.
Because, the reason I ask that, because it wasn't on the one last night.
You can take that up with the secretary of the planning commission.
Yes, I will.
All right, next item on the agenda is unfinished of the board. I'm not aware of any unfinished business that we haven't dealt with.
There is one. We have not submitted a, um, a report, or what we did last year.
Okay.
And, um, we talked about, I, I mentioned that to Paul last night, and he was supposed to, uh, do something about that.
I'm not aware.
Well, we don't, we don't have a report to approve this evening, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, but Ms. Farina is right, based on the state law, we have to make an annual report to, um, council of the activity of the zoning board appeals. And, um, hopefully staff can put that together for us, uh, for the next meeting. Which may not be until June, but, um, but yes, that, that should be done. Any other unfinished business? That's really an unstarted business, really. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is planning commission liaison report. Ms. Farina.
Uh, the planning commission last night, uh, we had one item that came before us. It is a open, um, site plan, uh, where a builder wanted to not, uh, complete his site plan and wanted to be let out of it. And we've been working with him for about nine or 10 months, uh, on ways that he can work to complete the site plan. We gave him a six-month extension, and, uh, it has to do with one lot not being built in a subdivision. And he, he does not want to put a road or the required, uh, utilities to that, which would deem, deem the lot, if you don't do that, is unbuiltable. And it shows in the site plan, so we have recommended that he sell the lot to the neighbor, and that the lots might, must be combined, and he's in the process of doing that. So that, that will no longer be a separate or builtable lot. It would, it is, um, it would be combined with the property next to it.
Would it be splitable?
It, it has to go through a review to be splitable again.
And.
It has to go through a review to be combined also, so. They're, they're requiring a, a new survey, uh, new, because it's, this.
I'm not sure of too many reasons how you can deny the combination of property, but, you know, it, obviously, it sounds like the planning commission has, uh, been doing significant work on this, and I trust in their, uh, action. I guess the only other thing I would say, and I don't, I don't think you even mentioned specifically what subdivision it is, but, um, you know, if there are other sidewalk or other improvements that would be required of a developed lot, I would hope that those would be required as part of this action, uh, for the currently vacant apartment. I've seen instances where those have fallen through the cracks, and you end up with a sidewalk gap 20 years down the line, and nobody knows how it, how it ever slipped through, so.
I'm going to get to that. We also had two people apply for the position on the, there was one open position on the planning commission. The vote came down, recommendations were three and three. Since there's only six people, so we made a recommendation to council that both people are, are well-qualified, and, um, we, you know, it is their, their honor to do, to make that choice. Thirdly, uh, we, we had the plan of, uh, what we had done for the past year for the, uh, planning commission, and that was presented in the, right here. And it has the actions that we went into. The, the master plan, of course, was, um, done and approved by the council last year, and, uh, it will be published. And, um, I'd like to, uh, make a, make a, a recommendation that we, everybody on the planning and the zoning board get a published copy of that report. That is the, the guideline that we should be basing all of our decisions on, uh, until there's another one. That was obviously the major thing that we had, and there were like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight, uh, site plan approvals and two special land uses approvals last year that we worked on. And, um, where we plan on going this year is, um, sign or ordinance updates, uh, continue to develop, maintain city sidewalk network. Design, we are, we have recommended, uh, as part of the master plan, that the city have sidewalks over everything, and, uh, business attraction and retention efforts, uh, to revitalize the, uh, downtown district, and, um, like I said, the sign ordinance update, and, um, and re-energizing the Downtown Development Authority. So, those are all things for council, uh, to look at, and things where people can get involved and help the downtown commission. Could be very, very, very viable for city and for everyone to get involved. And that, that is about it for, and we had our, our elections, Randy Warnock was elected the, uh, chairman of the planning commission. John Kyle was, was the vice president, and Ken Perry is the secretary. So. That's about it.
Are there any questions regarding the, the planning commission liaison report? Do we need to approve that, or do we just need to? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you very much for all that information. Uh, next item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding items on tonight's agenda or other items of interest to the board? Please note for the record that there was no one in the public that wished to be heard. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the October 7th, 2021 meeting.
Something for, uh, administration. I find it very difficult to remember three months later what we ruled and what was said at a meeting three months ago. Could we get these minutes out within several weeks of our meeting to, and so that we can respond back and then also have the, the corrections sent out after that?
I can make a note.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion on the October 7th minutes?
Second.
A motion by Menendez, seconded by Farina to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2021 as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next item is member comments and items of interest. Anything? Ms. Farina.
Just want you all to know that St. Malakie has started their, uh, annual fish fries every Friday. And the last night was the first one on Ash Wednesday, so I came directly from the fish fry here, and, uh, Randy was, um, going to get us out early, and we ended up walking out of here at 10 o'clock last night. I told him I was going to tell him, he, he, he's taking the record away from Stimek for long meetings. But if you want a good fish dinner, come down to St. Malakie's, uh, they have shrimp, uh, we have fried and baked cod, and, uh, mac and cheese and clam chowder, and lots of fun, so. It's eat in or dine out, so.
Anybody else?
Oh, yes, one other thing. You should be talking to this.
I was going to, but you, oh. Patrick's Day?
Yes.
Next Saturday, next Saturday, on the 7th, 8th, the 19th, I think it is. Nights at Columbus, John F. Kennedy is having their St. Patrick's Day, uh, dinner, and it's corned beef, onion rye, and potato, and whatever they, they, you know, they do.
And Irish coffee and green beer.
Have music, Irish music, so.
Anything else? Uh, I would say, I was looking back in my minutes, trying to figure it out, but I believe the last time that we officially met in person was December of 2020. So, more than two years ago. It is nice to have everybody back in the room. I hope that you all, um, stayed healthy, uh, while we were away. But I'm glad to see us have the opportunity to get back and, and do this in person. It is much more convenient to do it this way, although I did have to drive a mile and a half to get here as opposed to walking into my desk, but, um, it was like everybody back. Any other items? Next item on the agenda is adjournment, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Somebody, please. We have a motion by Tremonti, seconded by Logan, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.